Going into executive session and now we're reconvening in open session.
And you froze.
Pretty television broadcast this evening. It's being broadcast for the first time. It's a trial. We hope it works well. And just in case Tina is also recording it and it will be available on the website by tomorrow, I believe. Welcome to visitors. Ordinarily, we'd have opportunity for public participation policy BEDH, but this policy has been temporarily suspended by a school committee vote on March 23rd, 2020. Okay. First on our agenda is important events. So far, they're pretty much what they've been the last couple of times. Schools still remain closed March 16th through June 12th district wide. And school offices can be reached between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 12:00 p.m. still. Anything else, Michael, or anyone that we need to mention? Jen?
There is a Sheffield parade. Heather, do you know the date? Is it this week?
It's tomorrow, I believe, at 1:30.
Are they forming a Sheffield school starting from there? Do you know?
I'm looking up the details right now.
Get back to you.
Okay. While she's checking, occasionally my connection becomes unstable. And I know because everyone else freezes. So if I don't respond, it's because I'm waiting for the internet gremlins to fix whatever they're doing. And that's occasionally, that's what happens. It looks like I've got a fine connection, but it doesn't think so. Heather, you're muted. Muted.
There you go.
You're still muted. You hit it again.
All right, Ali won't use the spacebar. So it is starting Turner Spalls High School at 1:30, going down Turnpike Road, Montague City Road, Avenue A, Second Street, L Street, Montague Street, Griswold Street to Turner Spalls Road. Okay, guys?
Okay, so that's the parade tomorrow. Anything else we should note for people? Okay. Thank you. Superintendent's report. You're muted. Oh, yeah, you're muted, Michael. I thought it was my connection again.
Yeah, most of the things I've included are wrapped up in agenda items. I will say we're trying to close out our search for the Gill Elementary Principal. We have one finalist that rose to the top that everyone's very excited about. We're trying to see if we can kind of wrap things up with a contract before I present you with the person's name and information. And there's a good chance that'll happen by tomorrow morning, but haven't quite done that yet. So I would like to hold off just a bit on that. But it's been a good, thorough and competitive process.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? The rest will come up as we get to the morning agenda. Definitely. Okay, thank you. I think probably the same thing for the business and operations report. Joanne, is there anything specific you'd like to mention before we get to it on the regular agenda?
No, nothing specific.
Okay, thank you. School committee reports, the warrant subcommittee approval. Oh, I forgot to note the number and the amount. Do you have it handy, Joanne?
No, I don't. So I will get it.
Okay, just give me a minute. I think I can find it quick here. I have all kinds of devices here. Okay, here it is. It's an AP warrant, which means accounts payable. It's warrant number 3052 dated 5/27/20 in the amount of $228,695.06. Let me say that again. I need a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Heather and Haley, thank you. All those in favor, just wave or something. Do I see everyone? Thank you very much. Timmy, did I see? Are you okay with that?
I'm still with you.
All right, thank you. And you're okay with that?
Aye.
All right. Next item is, hi, Joanie, thank you for joining us. I can see you've been very busy. So we have the item of high school graduation plans next. How is that working?
Hi, everybody. It's good to see you all. Hope you're all healthy. It's been a roller coaster ride and we are on graduation version 5.0, soon to go to 6.0. But that's all right, we're adapting. I thought we had it all put to bed last week. Michael unfortunately could not be with us, but Adam Graves and I presented to the Board of Health on Wednesday night. We had a few questions, but had their full blessing to go ahead and have our football field graduation on June 5th. And that got blown out of the water less than 24 hours later by the commissioner. So then that day, Michael and I had talked. You had gotten a copy of the email I sent out to all senior parents and seniors, asking them to tell me by 5:00 today if they preferred to have the drive-by graduation. That would be on June 5th, our original graduation date. That's what we were trying to honor. And that was going to be the car the graduate was in and another car. And it was only the graduate that was getting out. Or have the football field graduation on July 23rd with the caveat that I could not make any promises that the commissioner would not change the rules that we need to abide by come July. So as of right now, I got 27 families to respond to me. Out of the 27, two said that they wanted it in June. One said that they wanted both, which was not one of the original options. And then everybody else said that they wanted it in July. So I need to talk to Michael going forward, but it looks like it will be July, but we're going to have to make modifications. That's why I said graduation 6.0 because the commissioner in that email said to have additional guidelines from what the Board of Health was originally telling us. So we were doing everything the Board of Health had asked us, like the physically marking off six feet. They're talking about more that we're going to have to kind of like rope off sections. So we will have to go back to the drawing board and replan that. To be honest with you, I'm kind of waiting a little bit until further in July with the final plans, just because I think it's going to change a few more times in between now and then.
That makes sense. Yeah, and I really appreciate you, you know, working and reworking and checking with the families. I think that's really wonderful and, you know, much appreciated.
No, everybody's been incredible because they've been very appreciative and they've been thankful about the communication we've had regarding graduation. And they feel like they've been part of the process. So they know it's an unusual circumstance. You know, they want everything normal, but they truly understand that there's no way that we can have that. And it's out of, you know, the schools control, the districts control. You know, it's just the way the world unfortunately is right now, so.
Anyone have any questions or comments about that before we move on?
I just wanted to reiterate that Joanie's putting in a lot of time on this, along with a handful of staff who have planned a ton of details about numerous different approaches. And they've spent a lot of time on it and it's been really thoughtfully done. And what they're planning now for June, I mean, excuse me, July 20, which is a Thursday night at 6:00, would allow families and students to be out of doors and be able to watch the entire ceremony. And the kids would be out on the football field. So it may be worth waiting for to be able to do it together.
Yeah, no, I wanted to thank Adam Graves has been incredible and instrumental in all of this planning. And he's so knowledgeable about our outdoor facilities. Sandy Bailey, Lisa, Guidance Secretary Beth Forten, Tabby Martinelli, John Graves, Heath Cummings, this goes on and on and on. So it really has been a collaborative effort. And it's, you know, unfortunately, this is my first year, so I was not privy to kind of like all of the traditions. But we really are honoring other traditions that have been done in the past, everything that we can possibly do, which I think is important to do for everybody, you know, just to keep the Gill-Montague traditions going, but to honor, you know, everybody in the past. And people realize that we're trying to do that. So we're going to have the trellis still going on. The Joyce invited to hand out the flowers like she normally does. You know, all the students will be speaking that should have been speaking. You know, all those things are important to students and they'll be able to be together. And we will have a professional photographer there. And just so you know, they will be taking pictures. And those pictures will be on a website that parents and families can download and access the pictures for free, so.
Well, thank you. And please, on our behalf, thank your team for all the work they're doing and continue to do. Thank you.
Yep, we're going to be continuing to do it.
I was going to say, you're just going to have to keep at it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll have a few plans in our back pocket, something else, you know, for years to come.
Yes, yes, there you go. Nothing will surprise you, right, Joanie?
That's right, that's right.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Next item is also you, the Turner Spalls High School Program of Studies. And we will end up needing to vote on this after the presentation. So if you'd like to walk us through the changes, that would be great.
Sure. I think it might be easiest to kind of, I have a list of names of new courses that we have. I wanted to address that first. Name changes that we have and then courses that we deleted and why we deleted them. So you guys know this is, you know, I came into the program of studies had, I don't remember, it'd already been approved, but you know, I wasn't messing with a lot. We're really trying to, with Innovation Pathways designation that we got, we also realized that we wanted to make a lot of positive changes and offer some other classes that students would be able to access. And so I really opened it up, you know, again, collaboration between myself and the staff in asking them what new and exciting classes that they would be willing to teach. And also if we could think of some more dynamic names for some of our classes that might be a little more attractive to students. So hence all of these changes. And some of them, the ones, the classes that we dropped really are classes that we haven't offered in a while and we just need to clean it up. So I'll walk you through everything. Okay, so I'm going to go through the new courses first and I'll tell you guys what age to find it on in the program of studies. So if you look on page 13, there is a new class that's entitled Journalism Read All About It. It is a five-credit class. And what we're doing is we're going to be partnering with the Montague Newspaper. And actually, students are going to be writing articles for the newspaper. And so we wanted to have that real-world partnership, I guess. You guys would know more than I did. Back in the day that we used to have a class that students were able to do that and that got dropped a few years ago. So we wanted to bring that back. And we want to have that relationship and we want to be able to see the community and the students having regular newspaper articles in the newspaper. So that is why we wanted to do that. It will meet the requirements for English credits that the Massachusetts requires them to have.
I just had a little aside in for that. When I was in high school, that class was ordered, was offered. And at that time, there was a page in Saturday in the recorder that was edited by all the schools. Everyone had an editor and it was a great experience. So wonderful. I think that's a great, great idea. A lot of people really learned a lot from that.
Yep, and we, you know, we think it's important for, you know, we're doing incredible things at the school. We need to get it out there. And we think this is one other way to show the community that the students are actively involved in their community.
It very much served that purpose and the articles could feature things going on at the school. It was great that way. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Just stop me if you guys have any questions as we go along. On page 18, there are two new courses that we are pleased to bring back. So it is AP European History. One is for five credits, one is for 10 credits. We haven't had that offered in a little bit. And Dave Smith is so graciously, one of our history teachers, he is already qualified to teach that and he's offered to teach that. So that will be another AP offering that we have for our students.
Right.
On, I'm sorry. Okay, on page 20, if you look, there is an Intro to Law II and Mock Trial class. And Laura Larson is going to be teaching that. What she was teaching before, they never really were able to get to the mock trial part. So the students have really been asking for the last couple of years if they could have a class that they actually get to run mock trials going back and forth within school. I don't know if you're aware, Laura Larson worked with some other people. And I'm sorry I don't know, but we have like the whole lawyer's desk and everything. So they'll be able to, you know, kind of sit behind that desk and really play the parts. And so that is something that the students have been asking for and we really wanted to honor that. And that's a, you know, to get their communication skills toned, to feel more comfortable talking in front of a crowd and just kind of that exposure to that level of in history, which would be awesome. We also, on page 22, you can see we have Trades Math, which is a five-credit class. And that is something that, you know, we have students who are interested in all sorts of career paths. And bringing the Innovation Pathways is one career path that we're looking at. You know, we have people going to college, people not going to college and people entering the workforce right after. And that's to more honor those people in what we can actually give them real-world application skills in trades and what the math is that they would have to use for those trades. You guys look at, also page 22, another new class is Applied Mathematics. And that's going to be real-world application. Again, you know, just kind of engaging the students and getting them excited about applying math in the everyday world. On page 27, we are introducing a Forensic Science class, which in Brooke Martin knows, one of her classes, they did forensic science, like a CSI unit. And the students absolutely loved it. So we want to bring forensic science as a regular class, as a science class. On page 28, you have Exploring Computer Science, which is a 2.5-credit class. So that's going to take a wide range and it's going to kind of really kind of be looking at what the needs are of the students. But it could be anything from coding to just, you know, like certain jobs in the computer industry and writing programs, figuring that all out. So we're doing a lot of application, if you guys can see there. Then Leslie Charles is going to, Superintendent Sullivan had suggested this and Leslie Charles took the ball and just ran with it. We're expanding our graphics art classes. So we're going to have a Graphic Arts II and a Graphic Arts III class. And the III class is the highest class and they'll actually be posing as a company and really kind of doing their logo and all the marketing materials and publishing all of those. So it's definitely real-world application. So all of these classes that we're saying, you know, the kids are hands-on, they're going to be engaged and it should be exciting. Then on page 35, we have Rise Up II. So Rise Up I has been so successful that the students have been asking and staff have been asking if we can continue that. So it really is playing and capitalizing upon students' leadership skills and encouraging those and really honing and helping students kind of realize what their potential is. And it's also a lot of community volunteerism, from going to food banks to animal shelters to doing a lot of team-building exercises. And students really connect with that and kind of really realize a lot about themselves as they take that class and what their leadership style is and what potentials they have. So Faith Clum will be continuing that. We had a lot of wants and excitement over cooking class. So we have a couple of people willing to do a creative cooking and consumerism class. So that would be hands-on class. We would be able to utilize the kitchen that Lily Meadows uses for her class, but we'd be able to use it for a block. And again, it would be like planning the whole menu, looking at the nutritional value, all of that. And also consumerism. On page 28, we have a class Exploring Computer Science II. So it's to take those students that are really kind of considering something in computers as their career or their interest in taking it to a higher level. So be doing more, could be doing CAD, it could be doing more coding, just at a higher level. And then classes that were already created, that were not taught in the past. On page 27, we're going to be teaching Climate Science, if you guys approve. So that's a very current topic, you know, as we look at everything to do with climate change. And again, it would be a project that the students identify. They would identify a need in our local community and what they could do to help change that and really develop a project for that. And then the newly created, already talked about the Graphic Arts I and II. And then we are going to have Yearbook II. So again, it's an extension of Yearbook I. It's just going to be doing things that are more complicated. They'll be learning more complicated skills than the students in Yearbook I. So the Yearbook I students would be doing the lower, you know, as complicated skills. And then the Yearbook II will be doing the more complicated things for yearbooks. Those are new courses. Do you guys have any questions or comments about the new courses?
Anyone? I just think that it really sounds as if there's a lot of thought and work going into this. And I just want to be first to sign up, so let me know what's open.
Yeah, this really again was a, you know, I'm very much, if you guys haven't figured it out yet, I'm definitely, you know, collaborative person. And this really was the curriculum coordinators reaching out with myself to all the teachers and say, hey, if there's a, you know, we could teach anything we wanted and we want to attract more students, what would you be passionate about teaching? So all of these classes were created by the teachers and they're definitely really excited. If you guys okay that we can offer these. Not guaranteeing all of them would run, you know, we would need enough people. But these are offerings that we really need to, we are in a competitive school market and we need to offer more exciting things that are engaging and hands-on and real-world application. And we think these offerings would meet that.
Tommy?
I love the offering of journalism because it's partnering with the Montague Reporter, which I believe Mike Jackson is on right now. But I'm excited to see that in that connection between the community and our school.
Thank you. I'm excited to develop that too. We're really, you know, very much want to honor like traditions that we've had in the past and things we've done in the past and really build those community partnerships back up. So I think that's really important to do that. Thank you. I'm going to go on now. If nobody else has any questions, I'm going to go to name changes, okay? So you can kind of see how we jazzed them up a little bit. So if you guys go to page 17 and if you look, there was a class that was called Native American Studies. We are still offering that, but we're going to be a little more specific and we're going to say Native American Cultures in the Northeast. So they're going to delve more into the cultures and in just into our area. So that's why we wanted to be specific about that. Also on page 17, there was a class that we had US History II. We are changing that to American History and Culture to 1900 to the present. So we wanted to be a little more forthcoming, you know, with the students and transparent. We're trying to be cognizant of that too. On page 18, there was a class that we had, used to be called Honors US History II, jazzing it up a little bit. We want to call it Honors American History and Culture to 1900 to the present. So again, we really want to bring the culture in and we want to define the time period that we're looking at. So it's not like this big, you know, looming time period. And next, if you look on page 18, we had a class called Modern World History. We would like to call that Modern World Perspectives. So again, we want to really kind of tie in and make sure the students understand that everybody has a different perspective, not one way's right. And we want to kind of tab them, take on the different groups' perspective and where they would be coming from and what would be important to them. Then on page 18, we had US History I. We're going to further define that and change the name to American History and Culture 1600 to 1900. Used to be a bigger gap. Now also on page 18, then we're going to have an honors class. So it'd be Honors American History and Culture 1600 to 1900. On page 19, I have three classes I need to talk about. One used to be called, this would be the precursor, the mock trial class. It used to be called Introduction to Law, Civil and Criminal Law. We would like that to be called Introduction to Law, Civil and Criminal Law. On page 19, the class was called American Law II Mock Trial. We would like to call that Introduction to Law II Mock Trial. On page 19, we had a class called Regional Environmental History. We would like to call that Connecticut River Valley Environmental History. So we want to make sure the students know that we're specifically talking again about our area. On page 26, we, there was a class called Ninth Grade Ecology and Environmental Science. What we would like to do is call that Biology I. And then there would be a Biology II class and we would like to do that to strengthen up our MCAS preparation for our students. And on page 27, we would like to make, there was an Honors Ecology and Environmental Science class and we would like to change that to Honors Biology I. Again, to concentrate more on biology and strengthen the possibility of students doing well on the MCAS test the first time. So those are all the name changes. Do I have any questions about name changes?
Tommy?
It's more about the curriculum change. I know we're doing some name changes, specifically you had Modern World Perspectives. Does the name change equal like a curriculum, like the actual scope and sequence? And is that a big change to not just the name?
No, it's not. So the name changes are not big changes, other than some of these concentrating more on our region to drive home the standards. So other than that, no, there's not big changes. We're mandated as a secondary school in the state of Massachusetts. You know, there's kind of like parameter. You know, there's, there's kind of like parameters and suggested classes that we can add. And these kind of fall within that, but no, it's, no, it would not be big curricular changes. Or the name change classes.
Timmy, did I see that you wanted to weigh in? Timmy? No.
I believe Timmy, Timmy is left.
Okay, thank you. The square is still there, so, okay.
Okay. She comes back in, she can ask me another question.
Let me correct myself, she's back in.
Have to leave. Yeah, all right, thanks, Joni.
Timmy, did you have a question you needed to ask? Oh, Tina said she was back in. All right, I'm going to go to the deletion of courses. And this is like basically cleaning up our program of studies. And I want to thank Tina so much for doing all of this. Our Program of Studies was, feel bad for Tina, was kind of like a, a computer nightmare. Because there's been a lot of people in the past that have just made, not at Tina's level. But they have made a lot of changes and we've created nightmares for Tina. So I just wanted to give a huge shout out to Tina for cleaning up all of us who don't know how to fix our errors. But there are classes that really are kind of outdated and we wanted, if we're doing this, we wanted to kind of clean up some things. So Microsoft Office, that is pretty much outdated and that was still in the Program of Studies. And we would like to eliminate that class. And that was on, that used to be on page nine in the old Program of Studies. On page nine in the old Program of Studies, we also had Accounting One and Accounting Two. If you talk to all the schools around us, they do not offer those anymore. And we would like to eliminate those classes. And we have no teacher to teach the class either. We'd also like to eliminate the marketing class for the same reason. Marketing is, you know, around our region, that is not a taught class right now. I majored in marketing, so I know, you know, back in the day, it used to be big, but not so much anymore. On page fifteen, there was a class that was Introduction to Music Theory. And that will used to be offered nine through twelve. And there's no time in teacher's schedule to teach it. But I really would like to come back to you next year with Alex Fiorentino and myself and some other people sitting down and kind of really being thoughtful about how we would really like to restructure the whole music department. So that would be something that we'd be looking to change in the future too. On page sixteen, there used to be a class called Current Events and Controversies. And we're offering the new course in place of this one, the one, excuse me for blocking you. What was it called? So we would be getting into it with, let's see here. Current Events and Controversies would be covered in our new history classes. The US Government and Civics Law that used to be on page seventeen, that's an outdated course that students never chose, so we didn't offer it for years. Same thing with the AP US Government Civics and Law. So we're hoping it's really the AP European History is usually a more desirable class for students to take for AP credits, so that's why we wanted to go that route. Contemporary Middle East is an outdated course that students never chose to, so we would like to get rid of that. Honors Algebra Two, used to be on, excuse me, Honors Algebra One, excuse me, used to be on page twenty. And that course has been moved down to eighth grade. So that's why we want to eliminate it from the high school program of studies. On page twenty three in the old Program of Studies, there were two classes, Wellness One and a personal fitness class. And all students take physical education now. And actually with our health class changing for, we didn't have to change the name or anything, but I just wanted to remind you guys that our health class, that all high school students will be able to take. Every student would be able to be certified in CPR for healthcare workers, OSHA, and first aid. So we figured those are more valuable right now in the work industry and would be better for the student's resume to have on there. Recreational Sports used to be offered too, same reason why we're dropping that on page twenty four. On page twenty four, there was a class called Body Systems, and it was five credits. And we're offering new science classes in place of that. And not for this program of studies, but we will have to be introducing it in, next year. We would be having to introduce our new Intro to Allied Nursing and Allied Health, excuse me. So that will be another class that we'll be adding and that will be from the Innovation Pathways. So that's why we're getting rid of Body Systems, because everybody would be taking that play, that class, if anybody was interested in Body Systems. On page twenty five, there was a class called Science in Society. And we are offering those new classes such as Climate Science and Forensic Science and the change to the biology. So we thought, we thought those met those needs. Science, excuse me, Earth Science, that nobody was signing up for. And we have new science classes that more students had asked for. There was an Honors Plant and Soil Science that also no students took, so we're eliminating that. Graphic Arts, we are eliminating just the five credit class because only two point five credit class is offered going forward, because Leslie's offering those other classes that build upon each other. There was an Advanced Graphic Arts, and Leslie has redefined that because it's being replaced by Graphic Arts Two and Three. So not like we're not offering that, but it's being redefined by those other. School to Career, that used to be on page thirty five. And that will have to be reviewed this coming year. And we have to comply with the Innovation Pathways designation requirements. So next year, I will be asking you to add a class, but we'll have to call it something different. And it will have to meet those needs of the Innovation Pathways designation. And that will have to do with working with Mass Hire and all the internship students too. So that is it. I know there's a lot. Does anybody have any questions about those?
Anyone questions, comments for Joni?
Sort of a question.
Mike?
Volunteer defendants for the mock trial class?
I can pass it on to Laura.
Shady characters, yeah, just let me know.
Okay. You're volunteering for the shady character, all right.
It sounds like you and your team have been doing a lot of work, but I think, you know, the relevance is obvious. I think that's, it's really, really helpful to see, you know, the thought that's gone into it.
Thank you. And we will definitely, you know, be bringing some more thoughts to you guys next year. Tina, I want to give a huge shout out to her. She shared a document with me that the, which I did not know existed until Tina educated me. But there's a document that Dusty puts out that kind of does a job about like descriptors of what's in a lot of common high school classes, but you can kind of have some play with the names. So as long as that, going back to Timmy's question, as long as that content is there, you can play a little bit with the names. So we'll be using that, that Dusty document to guide thinking in the future for next year too. For next year when we pose more changes for you guys. I really think, you know, in, in order for us to be more competitive and gain some more students, we definitely need to market ourselves, and this is one way to do that. Innovation Pathways is one, but another one is to offer a lot of exciting classes that the students have been telling us they want and the teachers have been telling us that they want to teach. So if you have a passionate teacher, you know, that's more than half the battle right there.
For sure. Timmy, did I see you wanting to? No, okay. I can't tell the square lights up. Timmy?
Yes?
Did you want to offer something? I thought your square lit up.
Oh, no, I didn't. It's just sitting on the table.
Okay.
It did it on its own. I didn't help it. Thanks though.
If you want to, just holler. Mike, did I see your hand?
Yeah, we'll make a motion to approve the, I forgot the title, but you know, the Course of Studies for the high school.
Program of Studies.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. Thank you, Mike. Do you have a second?
Second.
And Heather, okay. All those in favor? Wave a little. Timmy, are we good?
Aye.
Thank you. Yep, that's unanimous. Thank you again, Joni.
Thanks a lot, Joni.
Thank you.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. We will get the word out tomorrow. We're actually going to be Tina, myself, Beth Fortin, Lisa, so both guidance counselors. Tina and I will be working tomorrow and we will be getting out this information to students with their course selection sheets hopefully later this week.
Great. Thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one choice seats. We talked about that last time and Michael has brought it back for us again with a document that's in your packet. Michael?
Yep, you asked, you had a good suggestion, which was to take a look at our average square footage in classrooms to see, should we need to go to remote learning and have half of our kids at home? How many kids might we have in a classroom? And we found that on average, you know, we might fit twelve to fifteen elementary students and fifteen to seven secondary students. And thinking about that in the context of school choice, I think I would recommend that we continue to move forward with the number of choice openings I brought last time. Because it would not adversely affect the number of students in the room in terms of that square footage. This may be easier to explain with an example. So I gave you an example in my, in my report of Sheffield's third grade where we have fifty six students. An average class size without choice would be eighteen point six students. If half of them were there one day and the other half the next, that would be nine students. I'm proposing adding four school choice seats. And so the average class size would be, if you have remote learning going on, would be ten instead of nine. Now, you could make a case that any, every, every, for every new student you introduce into a classroom, there's slightly more of a health risk and that would be, you know, the case to a certain extent. But in terms of being able to accommodate these recommended choice openings within the given square footage, there would still be plenty of space in terms of hitting those six foot social distancing guidelines. So that's about as kind of clear as I can make that at the moment. And, you know, it's, people might have different perspectives on that. If you want to revisit that, I'm happy to follow whatever decision you all would like to make.
Sure.
Yeah, I noticed, better late than never. Could you just tell me, because I don't remember from the last time, are these number of openings the same pretty much as what was on the last document? Or have they been changed much?
They are the same with one exception, which is fourth grade at Sheffield, where the anticipated enrollment is only forty seven. And I did not have any choice openings on that list for you before. Because frankly, I was, I needed to think about the fact that if the budgets were really bad, there was the potential to only have two sections instead of three. In which case, you know, class size would have been in the upper twenties, but possibly something we could have lived with. I no longer thinks that that, that that's a good approach regardless of our finances. I think we should still have three fourth grade sections. In which case, we could add up to seven students and still have an average class size of, full class size of eighteen. So I took a different approach with fourth grade at Sheffield. That meant we could add some choice seats. We won't probably have seven takers anyway, but that's the only change since last time.
Anyone have any questions or thoughts about that? Belle? You're muted.
I'm just curious about how, how hard set you are on the alternate days of students in class or students remote learning.
I, I don't think ultimately that that's going to be our decision. I think that will probably come from the powers that be at the state level. But that's my best guess about what to anticipate. I, I don't, as I mentioned before, I don't really see how we get to six feet of social distancing without needing to have some students stay at home. There may be different scenarios that we, that the state has for us, but that's my best guess at the moment.
So it's really a school driven thing rather than anticipating that some parents may want to keep their kids at home?
Well, I, yeah, I think that's likely to be the case as well. And I think one of the things we might find ourselves doing, again, it would need to be a change in state policy, would in effect be needing to take on a lot more kids that are, in some ways, calling themselves homeschool, but we would still need to provide their teaching remotely. I think that, that may be coming our way. And so a teacher may be needing to instruct students in front of them in addition to some students who are not, not, not only are they not, not only are they, they wouldn't be rotating in periodically, they would, they would be home every day.
I understand. Thank you.
Jennifer?
What, I had originally raised this as a question, just to, I thought it was important for us to just think carefully about it, even though we had voted it a couple of months ago. So I don't know if, if we're okay with it, do we need to vote it again? But I think that we've done our due diligence of, of looking into it and making sure that with the new possibilities, so many unknowns, that we would still be okay. So I mean, I, I would support just keeping it the same at this point. Sounds like we've checked off all the boxes and done as much pre-planning as we possibly can.
This would not require a vote. Typically, you don't vote the number of openings each year, it's just whether or not to participate. So this would not require a vote.
Right, that was my understanding too, thank you. Okay, no other questions or comments about that? Thank you, Michael, also for giving us more information on that. The next item is Plans for Schools Through June Twelfth.
Yeah, you know, this, this agenda item is not significantly different than from our last meeting, which really isn't much different from the meeting before that. The remote learning continues, the meal service continues, teachers continue to work very hard providing remote learning. Counselors and others continue to work really hard and are very concerned about the welfare of our students and the students we don't hear from. A couple of times I've had data for you about participation rates. We don't have new data right now, so there's nothing to really report in terms of how remote learning is going at this time. There's only, you know, it's a little scary to think about, there's only three weeks of school left. And that brings me to the topic of, we do want to get some serious feedback from both parents and teachers about how this remote learning has been going, the remote learning built on the fly, so that over the course of the summer, we can do better preparing for the fall if we need to do some version of remote learning. to do some version of remote learning. The, we have a really pretty well-thought-out parent survey, parent and guardian survey, which is in your packet and ready to go. We're gonna hit send on that probably tomorrow or the next day. And then we're still developing a teacher survey, which is more complicated. Tina's pushing me to ask helpful questions, not like, do you want to know more about Google Tools, but, but very specific questions that can provide us with answers, informed answers. Because if you ask someone to tell you more about what they might want, if they don't know what the options are, it's not very helpful. So we're trying to figure out how to do a nice job with the teacher survey. But the parent one, we will send it out. You know, we will let people know through both remote phone calls and through emails and put it on Facebook and the website. And I think repeatedly, we'll, we'll ask for folks to go online. It's going to be one of those surveys you take, very easy to do on that Survey Monkey tool. And it's, and it's designed to, to be a pretty quick thing to take. A lot of scaled questions with some open response questions as well.
Haley?
I just wanted to make, make a suggestion. As a parent, I'm having a very different experience teaching to my kids. So if there was a way to take the survey more than once for a different kid, or to answer differently for the different kids, that would be good. And then I just thought that a couple of the questions maybe needed, not applicable, like if your child hadn't had any recorded lessons.
Yep. All right, that's, that's a good suggestion. My, my guess is you, well, I don't know if you could only take the survey once from one specific email account. And I'll talk with Tina about that. Not every family's got multiple email accounts, but that might be one workaround. But I'll, I'll let you know about that.
Jennifer?
Anecdotally, I, I think that there might be less participation as the year starts to come to an end, the weather's nicer, people have been kind of stuck at home for a while. I feel like the, the folks in my circle, I'm hearing a lot of, we're done with that, we can't do it anymore. So I'm, I'm just wondering what we're doing to try to, to keep the engagement going, and if there's any, any discussion about that. Because of course, school still goes until June 12. But it's, it's hard when they're not physically in the building.
Right. Yeah, I don't know systemically if we have any answers about what to, what to do to keep students with us. I think, you know, that's probably, that's an individual teacher challenge about, you know, who wants to compete with kids going swimming and, and you're not being able to stop them, for example, that kind of thing. Yeah, I, I don't know other than engagement and the relationships built among, among the kids and the teacher, what, what you can do for that.
Yeah, I, I do want to say, I think the teachers are really trying their best. But, you know, yeah.
If we, if our schedule permitted, I know where my wife works, some of the elementary teachers changed when they do their contact with kids to the morning, when they had been doing it in the afternoon. But the, the, the other teachers in the building were saying, you're competing with me, and it got families kind of upset. And so it's complicated to make a shift along, you know, a structural shift.
The survey looks very thorough, so.
Yeah, Connor worked on that with some others, and Mike, and then contributed to it. Looks good.
Thanks to them, too, for that work. Anyone else? Questions or comments on plans? Okay, thank you. Summer program, another unanswered question.
Yeah, I, I think the most important thing to tell you about there is that there's a significant hurdle. As Jen, just as Jennifer just described, you know, there's kind of a casualty rate of, of participation. And sometimes the kids we most need to see in summer school are the kids we don't see right now. So, so a summer school program that's more of the same is not likely to be highly effective. We would really like to be able to have summer school have some element of, of small group interactions, so that you might have three or four students working with one teacher or paraprofessional at a time. And the superintendents keep pressing Desi for guidance on that, you know, to tell us as soon as you possibly can if something like this might be allowable. We definitely know that Desi would like to give us the green light for that and provide that. They understand that. But right now, it's still a little hard to tell. So Diane's got a really tough job in terms of trying to figure out what to do with summer school. One of the things that's likely to happen is that it may end up starting a little bit later. I mean, it can't start too late, but, you know, maybe it'll start in mid-July instead of the last week of, of June or first week of July, to give us more time to, to know what's possible. And also, you know, the summer school is going to be targeted towards our special ed students and our EL students, the students who are probably, have lost the most ground relatively in the, in the spring, this past spring. So that's, that's, that's really all I have on that topic for the moment.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is the fiscal year 21 budget. Joanne? And Michael?
Well, I'll, I'll start it by saying the, the assumptions we're making, we've been making with you at the last meeting, maybe two meetings now, are, we don't have any new information. So we're still prepared to make reductions based on a potential of up to $800,000 of reduced state aid, not compared to last year's state aid, but compared to what we built into our budget. And we're working hard to be prepared to make those kind of reductions in a way that doesn't require laying people off. So that means holding off on most, almost all, but not quite all, seven out of the eight new hires that we had planned for the coming year. Using more E and D and school choice money, using transportation revolving. This meeting, I provided you with a history of those three accounts, so you could see where those accounts would be in terms of their potential balances, and then after dipping into them to a greater extent. The good news is, we have some pretty healthy balances in those accounts, so we can take on some unanticipated spending. Not a ton of it, but, but a fair amount of it, and, and not have to lay off a lot of people. Right now, though, I've been meeting with the principals and with Diane, the Pupil Services Director, and we do think that with the change, the shifts we have in our special ed population, particularly the students that need one-to-one paraprofessionals, that we can make a reduction of four paraprofessional positions across the district. And we know we have two retirements right now. So at the moment, we're looking at maybe having two, two riffs, two reductions in force for paraprofessionals out of our full complement of about 50 people in those ranks right now. Also, you should know that reductions in force from either Unit C or, or teachers by our contract need to be done by June 15. There's, if, there's a state law that says if there's, you know, a financial emergency that you are not able to anticipate, I think they call it financial, if financial exigencies require it, you could potentially have reductions in force after June 15. But, you know, clearly, we don't want to do that. So we're, we're, we're trying to be prudent in not causing pain of reducing jobs we may not need to reduce. But on the other hand, we have to be aware of our contractual obligations. So those are a couple, a couple of points about the budget. There's issues about the 112th approach and whether or not Gil's gonna have a town meeting, and maybe Joanne can speak to some of that.
Yes, I've completed the document to send to the Department of Education for the 112th budget. It's requesting a date for our anticipated town meetings. So we have the June 13 date for the Town of Montague, but as Michael said, we're still waiting on the date for Gil. I don't know what they're gonna set for a budget. What they're asking for is our fiscal 21 anticipated budget, what we built, and they're asking for our fiscal 20. And, you know, I assume it's gonna land somewhere in between the two. And, and our $800,000 of state aid reductions is really just our estimate right now. It could be a significantly different number when all is said and done in either direction. So it's just sort of a, a holding place for us in the middle.
Bill?
I have a question about the E and D usage chart that we received, and it's got $135,000 discrepancy, going from FY19 to FY20. You have FY19 start, FY19 revenue, FY19 withdrawal, and then you go to FY20, and there's $135,000 there that, that doesn't, that comes out of thin air. What is that?
The, the change is between what, what two numbers?
FY19. If you take FY19 and add the revenue and subtract your dispersment, and then you go to FY20, the certified amount, if you add up your numbers leading into that, you're $135,000 off.
So you take.
Your numbers are high.
You took the 557, added 239, and then subtracted 210, and it does not equal 586? Is that?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
It equals four something.
It shouldn't.
I added all the others, and it worked up until that line.
I think you're speaking about the line that begins 2018 on the left, certified, right?
I guess so. I'm not looking at the chart right in front.
I think so. That, that's where it looks like it to me.
I may have made a mistake when I added the additional 60,000 usage of E and D.
Timmy?
Did you call me, Jane?
Yes, did you want to speak?
No.
Oh, yeah, that's, huh. You're right. I see what you mean. It's, it's going from July of 18 to July of 19.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was wrong about the years.
Yeah, it should be the, by this account, it should be 422, not 557. So we'll have to take a look at that. We could send that document to everybody tomorrow.
Okay.
Right. The middle column on that document is just a plug that we put in. So the numbers that are in the left-hand column, the E and D certified, those are the actual numbers.
Those are real.
Right, those are real. The numbers all the way on the right, the E and D used,
Yeah.
those are accurate, except for the proposal. And so the one in the middle is just a plugged number that we put in.
So the 330, we'll have to trace the 334 back to see if that was on our presentations in the winter.
Right, it could have been on a presentation, and maybe we used a different amount, either use a different amount toward assessments, or our E and D ended up certified at a different amount.
Okay.
We just may not have backed into that number again.
That's a good catch. That's, that's why we, we want you guys to see this document. It's, it's important, that balance, the E and D balance, very important. Okay.
Thanks.
Anything else, Joanne or Michael, that you'd like to add, or any questions or comments people have?
It might, it might be a good time to, to mention Montague's town meeting. The town government leaders have migrated back to the idea of an outdoor meeting instead of using the high school gym. And it's scheduled to be in the high school parking lot on June 13, starting at 8:30 in the morning. I believe they're trying to make it as streamlined as possible, so that the meeting doesn't run any longer than it needs to. So we're, we're trying to get our deduction in the row in terms of making sure the select board and the finance committee are really clear about what we're, we are presenting, and, and so that we'll be able to answer questions easily.
Because the towns approve our assessments, the Town of Montague is not, they, they've indicated that the affordable assessment is still a good number for them. And so because the towns are approving an assessment, we don't really have to have our budget adjusted before we go to town meeting. Our budgets will be adjusted at some point after, but it doesn't need to be, happen before that.
Okay.
That's a good point.
Yes, fortunately, because we don't have any firm information, right?
Right. And we haven't heard from Gil about the assessments or about the capital projects either. So I am hoping to hear from them soon.
Any other questions or comments?
Bill, I just want to say that that, that E and D table has been like that since early January, when we started budget presentations. So the issue goes back further than that.
Okay.
Jane?
Yes, Timmy?
I'm gonna have to hang up.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Good night. Good night, guys.
Good night.
Bye, Timmy.
Bye, Timmy.
I'm sure we'll be continuing discussing the budget as we go through each meeting, hoping we have a little more information and it looks good, we can hope. But thank you, Joanne and Michael, for working with what little we have for information, to try to keep us up. Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda, pandemic response planning for fall.
Yeah, I just wanted to share with you the, it, it kind of picks up from what we talked about earlier about, you know, we don't, we don't know what will be directed to do in the fall, but we're working from a set of assumptions. And we, the admin team, you know, we're, we're in the habit, there's a whole fancy thing called having theories of action, where you try and, you put in writing the assumptions you're working from, so everybody understands them, and you can change them if you need to. So what, what we did with this So what, what we did with this district level template was to say, you know, what's, what are going to be our top priorities in the fall, assuming we're dealing with the pandemic still? And so we listed three goals and then we gave our best guess about how school might need to operate so that we could start planning for all of the, the, the changes. And, and so, you know, I could take a minute or not to tell you about those, those goals and the assumptions, but they're kind of right there for you to see. And then we've listed at the district level, who will be in charge of making sure we have the protective equipment? Who's going to be thinking about how to restructure desks and chairs? Who's gonna, who's gonna be thinking about, you know, what lunch is going to look like? All, you know, who's gonna think, who's gonna be thinking about what we need for, for whiteboards and cameras and all the microphones in classrooms? So we've farmed that, those decisions out to different members of the admin team in central office. And then my plan is to ask the principals to have a building-based version of these same templates, these same factors. They won't have to do as much work and a lot of it will be replicated from one building to the next. But the execution of it is going to be really important at the building level. So we want the principals to be thinking about how all of these different components might look within their buildings. So that's, that's the structure we're trying to put in place to start to prepare.
Jennifer?
So are the principals are gonna have conversations with like, at the classroom level as to how things might work? And I think that they may have, they may anticipate things that we aren't thinking about yet. So I think that that's crucial. And I'm also just concerned that, you know, of course, we're, we're gonna have a little bit of a constraint on the budget. But I think that, you know, if we have to do some of the things that are floating, like sanitized bathrooms after use and, you know, really be watching hygiene on younger students and just all of the logistical things that we're really gonna need some more, more paras. And there's gonna be some, some implementing that, things that need to be discussed of how it's gonna happen and how we can get it done. But I think having feedback from the teachers, you know, that are used to dealing with normal circumstances at how much, you know, what they can anticipate the needs are gonna be. And managing technology between remote and in-person. I just think that it's, it's almost impossible for our current staff to handle everything that may happen.
So two things about that, Jennifer. One is Carl and Kelly Goldie and I talked today about this needing to be an ongoing conversation through the summer. Because you're right, there's all kinds of things that I won't think of sitting at my desk that a teacher's going to think of in terms of what they would need to execute any kind of remote learning plan. So I think we need to commit to kind of having an ongoing dialogue about that. And then, oh, the second thing, oh, the second thing is easy for me to do because I, you know, only have a few weeks to go. But my plan with the principals was to say, I would rather have you work really hard at this pandemic response plan for the fall than, than your traditional school improvement plan. I don't think it would be fair to ask principals to do both. I just don't, I think, I think we need to kind of recognize the reality of things. And at least in the fall, be really focused in on this response plan, not so much about, you know, boosting MCAS scores, at least not for the fall. Maybe that shifts into the fall or into the winter, but not going into the fall.
Mike?
So is there some sort of learning standard implicit or accompanying goal number two? To provide students with settings conducive to learning, learning how much, learning what, learning? Are we waiting? Do you understand my question?
Yeah.
Expect them to have a year's worth of learning at the end of this year or? Go ahead, you, you.
So there's, what I, I would say there, there's two different questions here, Mike. And what, what number, what I'm looking at in number two does not answer your question, but I'll answer that in a second. Number two here is about the how. Like, how can we help teachers deliver learning for kids, design it? How can they design it in this crazy atmosphere we're going to have? That's what that's about. The, the question you might be asking is, so we've lost a third of a year of learning, now what? Like, what, what are you going to attempt to teach in the fall? And again, Carl and Kelly and I were talking about that earlier today. You know, I, I personally don't have any ambition to like erase the board and say, we're gonna, we need a whole new way of doing business right now. But I do think we want to provide opportunities for teachers, at least, to talk to their colleagues a grade above them and below them before and afterwards to talk about, you know, what, what did your kids get out of their year with you? And if I'm a third-grade teacher and I want to give the fourth-grade teacher advice, I, I would like to sit down and have a meeting and say, here's, here are the things I didn't get to that I think you're probably really gonna need to cover before you can make any heads or tails out of the stuff you plan to do. So that's the, that's the kind of thing we want to, we can plan for. And I'm not sure we'll be able to do a lot more, that's a lot more ambitious than that right now, maybe.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Jane, Carl, Carl's hands up.
Oh, okay, I didn't see it. Carl, thank you. Carl?
You're muted, I think. That, that muted.
Could be that now.
Okay.
I just wanted to point out that Desi just announced that they're planning on having ELA and math MCAS next winter, which is certainly gonna have an impact on what we plan for the fall and what we anticipate students need to learn. I think it's a horrible decision. But decisions like this coming suddenly are gonna have a tremendous impact on any plans we have. So we're gonna have to stay pretty elastic to keep up with them.
And maybe weigh in with our legislators and see if they have any
Yes.
any impact on things. I'm thinking we need to think about that, that, those kinds of decisions are a bit alarming.
Indeed.
But I think, again, to plan for the unplanned, at least, you know, you have a template there and you're, you know, thinking in those terms of how best to try to problem solve. Okay, thank you. I'm sure, again, that will be returning. Last item is just to mention the regionalization planning board, which is continuing to meet. It would be helpful if a Montague school committee representative might want to do that for a bit. I know Heather's been doing it for a while. And if someone else would like to, that would be much appreciated. I know everybody's got an awful lot to be dealing with right now. But just to have it out there. Again, we'll return to it at a future date and maybe things will improve for everyone.
Well.
Mike?
Just reliving the past, note that we were on the verge of voting not to have a representative to that body. Heather didn't actually raise her hand, but there was some portion of her anatomy that was slightly elevated.
I think she nodded at the wrong moment.
I'm just saying that that may be an alternative that we have to reconsider. If there are, if no one's available, and they just need an official answer, really. So just throwing that out there.
It's, it's a point, for sure. Jennifer?
Yeah, and I, I really apologize, but I can't take it on right now. And I think that situations in life is changing rapidly right now. So I think revisiting it, maybe we don't have someone for a time, but we could revisit it.
Absolutely. That totally makes sense. I just didn't want anyone who might be tempted to volunteer not to realize that we would welcome that opportunity for them. I say as a person who's living in Gil. Haley?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in and say that, you know, my silence and not volunteering is entirely to do with the pandemic and, you know, trying to keep another private school afloat while also remote schooling my children. And it's just like, can't take anything else on right now, but I'm sorry for that.
No, oh, right. And I think we need to assume everyone's, you know, lack of volunteering is simply not that they don't want to. It's just that it's not going to be possible right now, for sure. Okay, thank you all. We don't have minutes to approve at the moment. Anyone who has agenda requests, please just let us know. I expect we will be meeting early next week, which has been our, our habit. Usually Monday or Tuesday, we meet in the in-between week to make plans. And we will be doing that. The date of our next scheduled meeting is a regular meeting on June 9th, 2020. And right now, it looks like a virtual meeting at 6:30. If we will be anticipating an executive session, we will let you know as soon as we know. And it will definitely be included in the agenda. Anything else that was unanticipated? No? In that case? Excuse me?
What's the date in June?
June 9th, the first one, yes. And then last time, we set the two weeks from that for our second meeting in June.
I may miss the second meeting.
Okay.
I'll be away for a month.
Wow.
You won't know the difference. Call in from away, it'll all look the same.
You're absolutely right. If you hold it virtually, I can be there. I'm sorry. I was thinking of in.
Right, right. No, I have a feeling we won't. So thanks, Michael, good point. Yep. Okay, anything else? All right, I will entertain a motion, motion to adjourn, Mike. And Heather? All those in favor? Looks like we got it. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Jane.
Yeah, thank you, Jane. Thanks, everyone. Have a good day. Have you well.
Yes, you also. Thank you.
Yeah.